We have Greg, we have me, and we have, and we do not have Noel, is that correct? Okay, that makes sense. Noel is gonna not be here tonight. Let me ask my three questions of the members of the board. Did any of you speak to anyone regarding the issues before us tonight?
No.
No.
Were any of you out to see the two lots that we are considering tonight?
No.
No.
Yes.
And I have driven past it several times. I have not stopped in to look at it specifically. Finally, do any of you anticipate needing to recuse tonight?
No.
No.
All right. We can move on to the agenda. It's a very limited agenda. This is a special meeting, so we have two items on it. We do need to approve it, so if I can hear a motion in a second, we can move on with our business.
A motion to approve the agenda.
Paul, second.
It's been, we've had a motion made and seconded to approve the agenda that we will consider tonight. Finally, before we get started, we should open the floor for discussion.
Motion to approve the opening of the floor for the discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to open the floor for discussion. I believe we are all set to go. Do you want to make some introductions, Paul? The need for this meeting, the resolution of whatever was discussed at the city council, et cetera.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This request was before the Board of Appeals, they're meeting on March 15th. At that time, the item was tabled for up to 90 days for additional options to be considered by staff and the applicant. So again, what I have on the screen is the subject property, 1696 Dekner Avenue. It's a vacant lot. There is an existing home that is on that, or a home that's under construction that doesn't meet current setback requirements. And again, we treat this lot as an infill lot, as well as the adjacent lot. We look at an average of the existing homes in that particular block. In this case, the homes are set back approximately 45 feet. The home that is under construction and received a permit was approved at 25 feet. So it's again before the board for your consideration for that front yard setback. What staff has done since the last meeting is we've met internally with our director and assistant director and consulted with our law department. We also met with the applicant last week to discuss the circumstance and the issues. Unfortunately, we were unable to come to a resolution based on the situation. And that's kind of the reason why this has been brought back so quickly to the board for your consideration. I'm gonna defer to the applicant at some point here to maybe explain their reasoning and their timelines and why it's come back so quick and their kind of unique circumstances. There was also talk at the last meeting about the creek that runs behind these two properties. There is a waterway, but that prop, that creek is far enough away from these two properties that it doesn't impact any decision or consideration. And there's a letter that we received from the Department of Natural Resources that concurs with that. The stream itself is regulated on our zoning code. There's a 50-foot setback in this property. Both of these properties are well away from that water course. We did renotice property owners. We tried to find a balance to allow neighbors to reengage and be available for the meeting. We also wanted to be respectful at the time for the applicant and their timeframes. With the renoticing of the adjoining property owners, we did receive two new written objections to this request. One actually across the street. So there are, there are three single-family homes on the south side of Dekner Avenue. We have two written objections from those property owners. And the Fullers, I know have participated in the meeting last time. I believe they're also in opposition. I believe they're also on this call as well. So also on this call is Assistant City Attorney Lindsay Mather. So if the board has any questions for her from a legal perspective, she's available to address those questions. There is a sister request, 1692, right next door to this property, which has similar issues. But of course, they'll be treated as two separate items, but we felt that they should be brought forward for consideration because they have similar issues and similar timing. Again, I just wanted to review that, you know, for this site, a permit was issued at 25 feet. This is a copy of the site plan from the building permit that was issued. A street view prior to the construction of the two vacant lots. And then the image of the westernmost home. And then the applicant's construction project here. So with that, that's all I have to share at this point.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Paul. I think at this point, we can hear from the applicant to explain the case that they have.
Okay, thank you. The situation that we are in is we had pulled the permit in November for this project. We began digging on it prior to Christmas. The foundation had been poured prior to Christmas. We continued to work on it with volunteers, not knowing any, any issues were with the setback, anything like that. We proceeded to continue building it. Once we got the roof on it, I received a phone call from the city asking me to go down and apply for a variance for this house. That was on February 23rd. I was told not to do any more work on this house. We went to the variance meeting on March 15th. No resolution was agreed upon. It was tabled for 90 days, and we have since been working to find a resolution to our issue there. In the meantime, while working with Habitat, we have now run out of volunteer opportunities for all of our volunteers. We've told them, we don't have anything left for you until we get this resolved. So time is of the essence for not only our volunteer base in this hard time, but also for our sponsors as well. And that's not even including the family who has been sitting for two months, wondering why there's no more progress on their house when they're planning to move out of their current place. You know, it should have been a couple of weeks from now, and now we don't have any resolution to this project. So we have been sitting in limbo since February 23rd, waiting for a resolution to an issue that was not our fault in any way. We did the permitting as we were supposed to. We were granted the permit. And that's just, that's the tough situation we're in. We received a stop work order on when they were trying to hook up power to the property. And that's the last that we've been able to step foot on the property.
Okay, Mr. Zepnick, is there anything new that you wish to introduce perhaps with regarding to 1692? At least that we haven't considered before, or that we did not discuss the last meeting?
There is. 1692 previously had a house on it with a setback that is closer than at least 25 feet or closer front yard setback. That was previously there and torn down before we bought this property. Aerial photos show that that house did not have a 45-foot setback previously. And that would, that's approximately where 1692, the new property, the new building that has not begun yet, would, would be sitting.
To be clear, sorry, I'm confused right out of the gate here.
Yep.
We are not dealing with both variances at the same time, so, or are we? Because 1692 is the new one, the triangle lot. 1696, just so I'm tracking, 1696 is the one that we already talked about on the 15th and 13th, whatever the March, mid-March date was, is that correct?
That's correct.
Are we, Don, are we supposed to consider each one individually, or is this all kind of a group effort?
I was told to, I was also told to file a variance for 1692 right away because I had put the permit in for 1692. The permit application was submitted on March 5th. And it's been over a month. Typically does not take more than a week or so to get the permit after application. Reason being is that they said it was just put on hold and set for the variance meeting. So we, we have two properties that we have not been able to make progress on simply because we're waiting for a resolution on one of the properties.
Yeah, I think it's impossible for us to consider these totally independently. So Tommy, I guess an answer to your question, I believe that the decision that we would make on one would definitely cause some implications for the decision we would make on the other. So unless it becomes impossible for us to extricate ourselves, I think we should consider the possibility, or the, we should consider that we have two applications and talk about them and discuss them together. Both of these, am I wrong, Mr. Zepnick? Both of these entail a 25-foot setback from the property line?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Mr. Zepnick.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Assistant City Attorney Lindsay Mather. I just wanted to point out, hello. Haven't had the pleasure of meeting most of you yet. I just wanted to point out that there are two separate agenda items to talk about each of these things. And so in order to make sure that we're going through the meeting in conformance with our open meetings requirements, they do need to be taken up separately. I understand that some of the facts will cross over. And so I'm not asking that you completely separate the two conversations, but just make sure that the focus of this first part of the conversation is on 1696. And then when you move on to item number two on your regular business, you can focus on 1692.
We will, we will do that. Thank you. And we will definitely vote individually on the two, on the two issues before us.
Mr. Chairman, Cora Haltougher Hyde from Greater Green Bay Habitat for Humanity. I just wanted to mention Nate covered what had been covered and what we've talked to with the city about. One of the things that has not come up is besides the fact that we have followed every rule and we're probably one of the largest builders in the city on an average of eight, eight homes a year for the last 10 years. I see the neighbors sitting here that are in this, and I feel, I feel horrible that we're even infringing on somebody who doesn't want us in the neighborhood because our, our job is to really, you know, please bring people together, and this, this doesn't help a neighborhood or neighbors to start that. So we did nothing wrong as Habitat. It really does. We did nothing wrong. I purchased these two lots. One of the thing that we are, we're forgetting here is as of, as of February, we had just 80, we had $84,000 in, in materials. We had, on January 13th, I was standing there and it was capped, and the gentleman and my staff was there, and we were full force. We were completely legal. I, I want to go on record saying we've done everything we are supposed to do as an organization. We are here trying to take care of a problem that two weeks ago, I was talking to the entire city about because we have a need for, we have a need for housing and affordable housing. Now I'm being stopped in my tracks. When I say to you, and when Nate says to you, he has nothing to do. I'm in the process of after this meeting, I don't have things. I lay off people starting next week. I have houses that need to go. We don't have our permits for that. We, we have two houses we were planning. That is almost seven months of work for us. We're now stopped on that process. So what we have done here is now put us in a situation there. And at the, at the last meeting, and I was really appreciative of all of the the city employees, the Paul and Martell, and the Cheryl, and all those people that came together on a, on a call and asked us to come on this call. Because we need to operate. So I don't, I don't know where we go other than the fact that we've done nothing wrong. We pay our bills. We're a large builder in town. We don't build large homes. I don't ever want to give you the fact that we build large homes. The price of our homes are going up. But it's because of the pasta materials that we're all fully aware of. When we, when I bought these lots, I knew about where the previous homes were because we looked at the, the aerial maps are out there to show you where the previous home that was torn down was. That was a 45 feet back. And I sent those four, I sent those pictures over to the city, and you also have access to all the land records. So I just want to, that's what I wanted to say, and I do not think that that came up at the meeting when, that Nate was in the last planning zone. Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'd like to ask Ms. Altough for Mr. Zepnick, what consideration you gave to viewing the city ordinances before you pulled the builder's permit to do this?
We reached out to our survey, our surveyors, Malin Associates to do the site plan on this. That site plan was submitted, and that site plan was approved. When I submitted the plan for 1692 Dekner on March 5th, I asked the inspections department, review it, and please let me know how far you want us to set it back on the lot. And we would comply based on the knowledge from the previous 1696 Dekner, which is the big issue that we're addressing today. So we don't have an engineering or surveyor department. That's all done by professionals that we submit whatever they give us.
I guess my question gets to the issue of how much did you investigate the feasibility of the 25-foot setback? Was there any review, or was there any, anything inkled to you that other than the approval of the, of the builder's permit, that 25 feet would be okay? In other words, did you review the, the, the city's ordinance? And it say, well, there may be a problem here?
The, it was submitted to the inspections department, and the inspections department is supposed to review that and approve or let us know where it should be. It's not our expertise to, to read zoning code. We rely on the city's departments to do that and approve or, or adjust whatever needs to be done.
Okay.
And just to go on record here, I think it's confirmed that 25 foot is, is a common setback in the city of Green Bay. And that was, is our norm if I'm, I'm not mistaken. I don't know if that is a regulation. But Mr. Carlson, I believe that is the common setback in the city of Green Bay.
Well, it is, it is a normal setback, but in this situation, we have a different situation that we have to consider. Before we get too far into this, I'd like to hear from the other people online. Any comments, questions, concerns? We have the Fullers online. We have three alderpeople online. I'd like to hear from them, and then I want to get Tommy and Tom and Jim and Greg a chance to ask questions as well. But if we could, perhaps we could start with the Fullers first, if they have anything that they would care to bring up at this point in addition to what they may have discussed with us last time.
Thank you, Chair Carlson. I'm very respectful of Habitat for Humanity, my name to your organization. Still are very pro Habitat for Humanity, has nothing to do with your organization. We have been in conversation with our aldermen several, on several occasions, so I hope that Alder Stevens is perhaps one of those alders that are actually calling in right now. As far as the previous home, I guess it all depends at that point what ordinances were in place of the setback. So obviously, we are in 2021, things, any smart plans at the city and the standard ordinance, ordinances as far as setback is concerned. So I just wanted to, I know, I remember the house. We've been here since 1997. It was, it was in pretty sore shape once it was tore down. My question though is, like, what options were considered when you did meet with the city? Did you talk about, you know, moving the foundation and then literally picking up the house and moving it? I'm just curious that there's no resolution, but I don't know what options were even discussed. So that was one, that's one of my questions. If Mr. Zepnick or Ms. Haltougher Hyde could respond, or maybe?
Mr. Zepnick?
I can respond to that. So during the meeting, we, I had reached out to a house mover to get a quote and find out what is all encompassing with moving a house. The determination was that it would be well north of $50,000 to pick the house up, basically remove the foundation, dig a new hole, pour a new foundation, and move the house. The problem with that is that we are not at fault with putting the house where we were told we could put it. And we don't have, we're a nonprofit that builds simple homes. We don't have the funds. The family cannot afford an extra $75,000 on top of what their mortgage is going to be, just because the house wasn't placed where it eventually should have been.
Were there any suggestions on the city side, since it seems like that was an oversight, that they missed the 45 versus a 25-foot setback?
We have not heard anything further. They said they were going to get together and talk about it. And then my next conversation with them was that we were gonna be here tonight.
As you know, that this is a permanent structure. I know Alder Dorf had suggested perhaps some landscaping, and, you know, this is a permanent structure. Landscaping can always be removed. And I'm not sure, my husband actually did speak to the Hispanic couple that lives right next door, and I'm not sure if they did contact Mr. Newmeyer or not, but they're, they're very disenchanted with where the placement of that house is, as I'm sure you can, could completely understand if you had actually taken a ride past that property. I really don't have anything else to add at this time.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Excuse me, my husband would like to make a comment.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. I did speak to the, the gentleman at that house immediately to the east two days ago. He said, he told me that he spoke to two different realtors, and they both told him that between the two, it could be devaluing our properties by 10 to 20,000 dollars. I did not ask him who those realtors were. He said he was going to email. I don't know if he did contact anyone with the city.
However, being, I know that you had said that they did have concerns, being Hispanic family of how, whether or not their opinion would be respected. So I just want to let you know that we have been in contact with next door neighbor. And let them know, let you know their thoughts.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Alder Gerlach.
Just a quick question, please, for one of the folks from Habitat. Why was the 25-foot setback decided upon?
The 25-foot setback was decided upon from our surveyors giving us a conditional site plan that was submitted with the building application, and that's what was approved. I think it should be noted that the three inspections were done from the time that we started digging until the time I got this stop work order. So inspectors were out on the site three separate times and never brought it up to me until February 23rd.
If I may follow up on that, please?
Please, go ahead.
So what I'm wondering is why the surveyor chose to put the house there? Because I saw in the packet that there was also a concern about that creek behind the house. And I'm wondering, was there a need to move it because of that? Does anyone know why this decision was made?
Why the decision was made by the city?
To do it, yes, by the surveyor, no, by the surveyor. Why did the surveyor said, put it here at only a 25-foot setback? Is there, what was the reason for that?
A 25-foot setback in the city of Green Bay is very standard. When I talked to the building inspector that approved it, he said that he saw 25-foot setback on the permit application and didn't think twice of it because it's such a common setback in the city of Green Bay.
Okay. Thank you.
And the only other comment I would add to that is Malin Associates are licensed, they're permitted, they have all the degrees. We paid them $950,000, or $950 to tell us where to put that house. Then it goes to the city. It's not that they do this pro bono. We paid them to tell us where to put this house. And it's the city's response. Well, we pay them, right?
The site plan is a conditional plan that is an application that gets submitted to the city for approval. At the time that the application was submitted, it would have been simple for the, the inspection department and the zoning to look at that and say, hey, move it back a little bit. That's an application that we submit with a suggested setback.
I think Alder Gerlach was getting to the issue of was, was it, what, was there a reason why you could not put the house at, let's say, 45 feet? Or whatever the, the setback would be, it'd be consistent with the adjacent properties?
There is not, and if it would have, if the inspection department would have asked us to put it back at 45 feet, we absolutely would have complied.
Yeah. All right, we, is there any other property owners online before we, I'd like to hear from the alderpeople first, if there are no more property people. Sorry, you trying, I see your picture, but I don't hear you talking.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Barry McRae. I live in 1697, right across the street from the house in question. And just so everyone knows, I speak Spanish, and I spoke to both of the Hispanic neighbors today. The one on the east side said that they were not in favor of the construction and that they had sent an email last night. And I also spoke to the neighbor on the west side, who is also not in agreement. When the construction was started, I was amazed that the foundation was being dug so close to the, the adjacent house. And I said, I'm sure that they're not going to be very happy about that. But then I saw that it continued, and so I said, well, they must be within standard because I'm sure that Habitat has applied for a permit and received an approved permit. And then I was really surprised to receive the first letter about the, the variance meeting. I don't care for the way that it looks, but I agree with the lady that was on the last meeting. It seems to me that the city of Green Bay is responsible for this mess, and the city of Green Bay should foot the cost of relocating it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. For the benefit of my, of my colleagues on the board, I'd like us all to avoid trying to make some sort of prejudgment as to who may or may not be responsible for whatever needs to be done to rectify this situation ultimately. We're here to decide a variance. We're going to let people far above us on the pay scale decide who has to pay whatever on this, assuming that we, we do not grant the variance. on this, assuming that we, we do not grant the variance.
Right. I understand.
I appreciate your concern, sir. Is there any other property owner before we hear from any more of the older people?
I do, we do have another neighbor with us, because I was able to hook onto Jim, here, here, or hook on Zoom, here he is. Get the, go a little bit farther, break his voice.
Can I make a point of order?
Hold on.
Someone is doing feedback, someone that's with initials A L D. There's feedback coming through, and it's real hard to hear. So that person couldn't mute? Now it's muted. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
I live at 1711 Dekner Avenue, and my request was that the board members through the council should drive down there. And my main concern is the neighbor that lives right next to that place. It is like halfway into his front yard. And when you do this, you should think about your own home. And if you'd like somebody to build a house right next to yours, and look out your window and look at the side of your neighbor's house, because it doesn't even look right or correct. I was, I was surprised, too, like the other neighbor said, about how close it is in relevance this way, you know, sideways, but then, as he built and constructed, and then, then it was like, this thing is like halfway out in the front of his house. You should, everybody on this meeting should drive by there and look at it, because I guarantee you, you would not like it in your yard. I don't know who made the mess of this, but it ain't fair to that guy that lives there. And I, I'm just live across the street, and I don't get the letters, because supposedly this 100-feet thing, but this is our neighborhood. And I, I don't know how to go on these Zoom meetings, that's why, all, all the community right here, our neighbors, are talking. So just so, I'd like to voice my concerns. It, it's not very good. And I respect that, that Habitat for Humanity and everything else, and that that lot over there is almost unbuildable. It's been sitting there forever. And I think somebody got sold a bill of goods with it and got a cheap deal. That's my opinion. I've been working construction for 30 years. And when you make a mistake, you fix it, and whoever made the mistake should be responsible.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Could we hear from one of the three Alder people on? I don't know if...
This, Alder Stevens is here.
Yes, Alder Stevens, could you speak to the issue, if you care to?
Yes, good, yep, good afternoon. How is everybody?
Excellent.
Sorry for all the feedback. I'm actually in Nevada, so it might be my phone causing all the issues. I did speak with Wayne at 1700 Dekner Avenue this afternoon. He was going to try to get on this call, but he was unsure because of technology, he's unfamiliar with it, so. So I will have the, I'll explain the conversation that I had with Wayne. As, as all of the neighbors around there are explaining, Wayne is also the same way. He's very unpleasant with the location of that building. He also thinks that it should be set back. He did state that when he looked out his window, now he sees a house. And also, he's also having some other issues with his property, but that needs to be taken up with inspections, not during this call. So during that conversation, he definitely wants to see the building moved.
Thank you. Alder Dorf, did you care to speak at all regarding the issue here, or provide anything?
Yeah, I do. I do care to speak. Alder Stevens, can you mute yourself, please?
Yep, hold on.
I have a couple of things to say. I went out to the house, I walked around it a few times. I, I know where it's situated. One question I have, first of all, Chair, is, I'm trying, it's hard for me to understand hardship. You grant variances based on hardship. What, what is that definition? Can you help me understand that a little bit better?
Well, I can give you my interpretation. It has to do with the burden that the applicant is claiming he or she will bear due to the need for the variance. In this case, in, in all cases like this, we are, we are always warned that we can't consider a self-imposed hardship. These have to be hardships in particular that are particularly associated with the shape, the size, the position of the property, not a general inconvenience to the owner.
And so, this was, was this self-imposed, or was this not self-imposed, since all of the rules were followed?
A case can be made, and Attorney Mather has allowed us to have some of her insight on this. A case can be made that it is self-imposed. That issue, that question will have to be brought up and considered by the board members as to how strong that appears to them, as to whether that is sufficient to grant the variance. I think all of the five, the other four board members on have seen the letter that Attorney Mather sent to us regarding the issues before us tonight. And so we're aware of, of the concerns, and we're aware of the argument that could be made, that this was self-imposed. We don't necessarily have to agree with Attorney Mather. We all have our own opinions, and I'm just one of the five opinions. But we all, we all are familiar with what that reasoning would be.
Just to clarify, I was just telling you the standard, you guys get to make the decision. I wasn't advocating one position or another. Just want to be real clear about that.
Right. We will be clear. We will be clear. The, the staff has not and will not make definitive recommendations to us, much to our distress sometimes. Unfortunately, we're out here on our own. That's what we're here for. Thank you, Attorney Mather. But you did provide a very good letter for us, and I appreciate that.
So the issue is not that Habitat for Humanity is, is building a house there, that the neighbors have no objection to a Habitat house being there. That was my understanding from listening to Dawn, who I know from, from a past life, speak. I, I, I guess I am concerned about the anger that I've heard in people's voices talking today. I'm concerned about whoever that family is that would be moving in there. And so that's just, I guess that's just the human part of me. That's the, you know, educator piece that, that makes me very, very worried. I'm, I'm worried about the family from the point of view of not knowing, I don't know who they are, and I don't know where, where they're going to live now. It depends, I guess, if there's a variance or not. I'm concerned about Habitat for Humanity. I mean, years ago, we helped a couple with their four or three children get a Habitat home, and, and were there, and when, when they moved into it, and I actually was supposed to make a little speech, and I just broke down in tears. I couldn't even talk, because it was, it was so emotional and so overwhelming. And then these were two people that were physicians in their former country, and, and coming here, or have, have not been able to be physicians again because of the, the grasp of the English language. But, so Habitat, it, it's, it's pretty close to my heart. And this is an important service that the volunteers in the Habitat does for our community. And, and maybe you can't take any of that into consideration. You guys have a really, really, really hard job today. This, this is awful. You know, part of me wonders, is there a right and is there a wrong? If all neighbors, 100% of the neighbors say, hey, this is a great idea, we'll, we'll take this, then is it right to grant the variance? Or is it wrong to grant the variance, because that's not what's official? It's not 70 or 45 feet back? I mean, is there, these are just all questions that have been in my head. So if people are against it, then that weighs into it. But if people are for it, then that weighs into it. Is that right, Chair?
We have, we have five people on the board, all of whom will consider exactly the kinds of issues you're bringing up, and we all have our own separate opinions. I thank you for your comments.
Thank you for listening.
Before we get to the, to the members of the board's questions and concerns, we'll hear from Alder Gerlach again.
I'm sorry, but I have another question, if, if I may. So I've heard comments about the fact, I did, by the way, I did go and speak to the people who live directly next door to this house. I live about six blocks away. And so I've heard a couple of comments about, the, the lady at the house said this, and I heard someone say it on this call, that when they look out their window now, all they see is a house. But as I said, I live about six blocks away, and when I look out that window, all I see is a house. And when I look out that window, all I see is a house. That's Karen, and that's Mary. And I'm thinking, if they set the house back, they'd still just be looking out the window and seeing a house. So my question is, is that house too close to the property line? Or is that part of the situation correct and accurate?
Paul, as I understand it, the side yard variance for the proposed construction has is, or has, could be proposed, is all right. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. I believe it's at six feet. The only issue here is the front yard setback.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's an issue, Alder Gerlach, of their, their view as they go out their front door, let's say, is, is taken up by a very large construction to their left. And that's, that's about all I can say on it. Yes, Ms. Alder Cora?
Yes. I just want to make one comment. I am, the last time, well, last week, when we talked to the city staff, I'm, I'm just, I just want to go on record saying I'm very disappointed, because at that time, I asked if I should bring legal counsel to this meeting and be prepared to have legal counsel with me. And I was told it wasn't necessary for me to do that. And right now, I, I don't, I don't feel it's a level playing field right now, and I feel very saddened by the comment that I'm sitting here, doing everything right, and yet you people are referring to legal counsel. And I just want to let you know that it is not in the best interest right now of what's happening to our organization. And by use, having a legal counsel opinion, that we were told that we didn't need one, I think it's, I just think it's a little bit tainted.
I appreciate your comment. All right. At this point, I believe we've heard from everyone, and I've taken up an awful lot of time on the microphone. I turn it over to Tommy, Tom, Greg, Jim, for questions, comments, that we are at the point where we need to make a decision and deliberate upon what we've heard.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Sure. I would like to ask the applicants, if there are, is there alleging a hardship? I got a couple of questions. Hardship that's outside of financial concerns?
We have some hardships with our volunteers and our sponsors right now. You're talking about people that, for 320 hours of volunteer labor and their time, what's their time worth to come out and help us do this? Sponsorships, sponsors are looking at a house right now that's sitting there with no progress for two months now.
Also, I have a family, three or four children that are waiting to move into their home, waiting to give notice to their, I've asked them to stop. Their landlord or somebody else coming in behind them, that's a hardship for that family. I have a hardship that my, my organization will be shut down after tomorrow, with whatever the decision is made, and we will not be wrapped up again, as far as the construction end of it. So those are some of the hardships that I, that I'm facing right now, along with the, the, the funding, that nobody's even talking about moving this house, and what it will cost, and what we have into it now, and what that puts us by, behind the eight ball right now. I, I have a schedule that goes out for 18 months of homes, and I have showed that to everybody on your, on the staff. And what that does is that shuts us down. This is 18 months of homes, four months, four, four and a half months per home. We're shut down now into our third week. What you're doing is we're just pushing these families back. But it's not one family, it just keeps going.
Yeah, I understand, I understand what your response is, and we have to...
That's my hardships. Those are my hardships.
Yeah, you don't need to be confrontational. I'm just asking you to try to get an understanding of it. The other question I have is, if you were to move it back with, to the, to comply, would it be, would it, the lot be usable?
I would assume so, but that's, that's a decision that the zoning and planning, you know, they, we defer to that, that's why we're in the situation we're in, though. In my opinion, I, I don't have one. I don't know.
The other question I have is, when you say you defer to others, as property owner, do you believe you have some sort of obligation to know some of these things, or, or not, in terms of the ordinances and so forth?
Of course, we, we would love to comply, as long as there's, there's no pushback at all from us as far as complying, as long as we know upfront. I mean, absolute, we're, we're here, we're here to be partners and, and do this together. It's not, it's not something we're trying to fight. We're just, we wish we would have been asked to just put it back a little bit farther from the get-go, not after three inspections were done and permit was given to us.
Thank you.
Tommy, Jim, Tom?
I'm good. Just to kind of, I think, dive in for me, I, I'd like to get a clear answer from, from Mauan Associates. You know, it sounds like, what I'm hearing from Habitat was, we hired them as the experts to do a site plan for us, and, and kind of build out the vision of what this looks like. Was there any, first question is, was there any alternative plans that were drawn up, or any other alternative ideas that have been coming up, that could have made the property a little bit different? Or was this the only plan that came up?
This was the only plan that came up. The reason I say that we deferred to Mauan Associates is because they do our site plans. The bottom line is that the city of Green Bay has, they have employees that specifically look at this stuff and approve it, so that we can get to build a permit for it. We, I mean, that's why I say we defer to the city in this, because there are several people that look at this to decide if it's right or not, and we were told it is right.
Right. I think this, the reason why I asked for the record to clarify that is because, as an overall project, there should be knowledge of the code, whether it was Mauan Associates or the landowner. And so those are the partnerships that is created in terms of the design. Yes, we've all agreed there was a mistake, I think, made in terms of the plan, but I do want to kind of get that, kind of, just for me, fleshed out, just a bit, that what I'm hearing is, Mauan Associates were the one, from you as the landowner, that were, that relied on their expertise to know the code when you submitted it. And the fallback, the check back for all of that would have been the city saying, hey, this doesn't comply, send it back. But you didn't know the land, the, the code, you relied on Mau to know, know that, is what I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. I, I think the reason that this got brushed over is because 25-foot setback is pretty standard, from what I heard from talking to the build inspectors, that that's pretty standard for everywhere in the city of Green Bay.
Right. Okay. And then, all of the, so it's very important to, we deal with this at the board, we've gone through training as well, and so I just want to make a comment on the record, that hardship is not individually based. It doesn't live with the landowner. It's supposed to be removed from the landowner, because this property will live beyond multiple sales, multiple property owners. So it is a property-based decision. So I agree with everybody that this is a difficult situation. No one, I think, from Habitat, from Humanity... think, from Habitat, from Humanity, came in and doing anything ill will. And I think that's really important to for everybody. I think everybody understands that. And I don't personally hear that from anybody right now. So I want to make sure that, regardless of what decision I make, like, there, I'm not making decisions based on all that. What I'd like to ask is that if we take moving the house out, all of those other hardships that are not supposed to be part of our consideration in terms of how we train, is the property that you're building, whether it's reconfigured, like we were talking about last time with the driveway maybe on the other side, is there a way to build a good-sized house and use the land in a way that you can to make a usable property for, do you believe that's possible to do that? Regardless of where we're at currently, is there a way to do that? And I'm going to be listening, my, my computer's going to go to sleep, so I got my AirPods in, but I do have to plug in because I don't want to jump out. So I'll take the answer, but I might move. Or if you don't mind waiting 30 seconds, I'll just plug this in real quick. Sorry, bad timing, my computer just warned me.
It's all right. Mr. Zepnick, did you care to reply? I think, I think Tommy kind of left it hanging there.
Sorry, did I?
That's okay.
Just, what I'm saying is, can, again, there's all of these considerations in terms of where we currently are. If we're able to remove that stuff, and we now know that there's a 45 cent, 45-yard setback, can we design a house and a property that makes sense without needing any very variance, this specific variance?
Let me just, and, let me just touch on one thing here, and, and I, I believe that part of the reason why they set this house forward is because we don't, we're in a different situation than all these other neighbors with a 45-foot setback. The church on the corner has got a, not even close to a 45-foot setback. The building that was there on 1692 had much less than a 45-foot setback. And our properties, these two are different than everybody else because there's a creek that runs through the backyard that turns these lots from a rectangle into essentially a complete triangle. So we, we have to go forward, in my opinion, than the other houses, because we have the creek running through the backyard. Now, I don't know where things could have been placed at this point for 1696. I feel like it's too late for that. But I feel like with the next house, it's going to have to be farther forward than 45 feet, because it's a triangular lot that has the creek running through the backyard. So I think they took into consideration that 1692, the corner lot, is going to have to be closer to the street, and the one that is there currently is not going to look like such an outlier when our project is complete.
Right. I understand, because I saw the, with the new one, that's why I clarified earlier. My feeling is that we should be making decision, this is my feeling, and I'm, I'm open to feedback or discussion with my board members, but they should be, this is a singular thing, and this property, again, because it doesn't live with you, it doesn't live with Habitat, it doesn't live with the family that you're selling it to, it lives forever, right, as this permanent structure. And so I want to look at this property and make decisions about this. So I don't feel like I got a straight answer, and I'm going to kind of press to get a straight answer on this one for me, to make a decision. Do you believe that the house that you are intending to do, regardless of the approval, the mistake of the city, that if you went back knowing there was a 45-yard setback, with Mau's, with Mau's expertise, would you be able to build on this lot appropriately?
If we would have been, yeah, if, if we were, if we're talking, today is November 16th, I'm submitting a permit, and I bring it to the, I bring it to the city, the building application, and they say, hey, you got to move it back. I believe that it would have been possible, absolutely, to move it back. But I was never told that until three months after beginning.
Yeah. And again, I think that's the difficult part for all of this. So I appreciate all of that. I just want to get these, these other points moved forward. Last thing, Mau and Associates, no one from them is on this call, they didn't speak, no one's listening in, they're, they're not present at all currently, is that correct?
No.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions. Chair, I'll leave it up, this looks like someone's raising their hand, I'll leave it up to you to facilitate that.
Hey, thanks, Tommy. Is there anyone else, did you care to speak?
I'd like to speak, Chair.
Yes, please.
Ah, this is James Went again, from 1711 Dekner. If you drive down Dekner Avenue, I don't believe all these things about setbacks and stuff, what he's talking about, like the church on the corner, if you, if you drive directly down the road, there is not a house halfway in somebody else's yard. So if this passes, I'd like to get a red variance, and I'd like to build my garage halfway to the street.
You might run into a different variance requirement, but I-
You know what I mean?
I take your-
I, I, I mean, this is, this is almost ridiculous. No, it's, it's just like crazy.
We, we're pretty familiar with that. Thank you, sir. I'd like to hear from Tom or Jim.
I've got a question on the house that was taken down, and I guess I got two questions. One is, what is the setback exactly on this street, or the front?
Paul, you want to weigh in?
Sure. So the question has to do with the former structure that was on the property?
No, right, I guess I, what is the existing setback right now for that street, for the front of the, the building that's going to be built?
Yeah, so, again, the lots are, they're two vacant lots, and we're talking about 1696 at this point, right? So it's considered an infill lot. So we have existing homes in that block. The code requires that, in an infill situation, that an average of the homes in that block be taken to determine the setback for the infill lot. In this case, when we look at the homes in that block, there's three of them, three singles, their setback almost identical, they're about 45 feet from the right-of-way line. So their average is approximately 45 feet. So we would apply that distance to this lot, as well as the adjacent lot. So we have to look at the average of the homes in that block to determine the setback for a vacant lot throughout the community, not just this site, but all vacant lots.
Okay, thank you. So the house that was there, what was the approximate setback of that before it was taken down?
Yeah, let me, let me take a look. I, I would estimate it, so I'm looking at, I, I didn't bring it up, but I'm, I was looking at an aerial photo from 2000 and 2005. It was removed between that time, that structure was. It approximately had a setback of 15 feet from the right-of-way line.
15 feet? Okay. So if that house were still there, that would come into this equation? Or was that house taken down for some reason?
I don't know the full history of the house, except that it was removed again between 2000 and 2005. It would, if it, if it was standing today, yes, it would be part, it would be counted as part of the calculation, yes.
Okay. So the fact that that house is no longer there goes to a 45-foot setback. That's why we have such a big one. And the fact, having a structure closer to the road isn't new, it actually was that way some time ago, but now it's gone. So now we do have a 45-foot setback based on the existing buildings.
Right. So I'm going to speculate that that structure was probably the oldest one in the block possibly. The other three homes that are standing were built in, what was it, 28, 38, and 51. So there's some, they're quite old for that, but I suspect that the one that was removed was even older than that. So again, I think that, you know, that's, that's, that's the reason why we have those setbacks, it's why the code requires that to have some consistency in a neighborhood, where maybe if there isn't consistency, we need to take the average.
Okay. And, and I just want to make sure we're looking at everything here, because we've been kind of walking down a narrow hallway here, in a sense. Could you show the plan view of that street? Because it looks like, to me, across the street, it's a different deal. So we don't have to be concerned what the setback is on the other side of the street, we're looking at just the south side of the street.
Correct. So when we looked at, at the infill situation, we're looking at the south side of Dekner Avenue, between Henry and Main Street. In this case, we only have three single or three residential homes.
Okay.
So that counted for calculation. As far as the church, that's an residential use, it's setback approximately 34 feet, if it was to be considered, but when we do the calculation, we're looking at like properties.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you, Paul.
I have a question. I have a question. Does, does, with Habitat for Humanity Homes, does, does ownership always stay with Habitat for Humanity in terms of that property, or does somehow get transferred? I mean, how does that work with the people who reside there? Do they take ownership? I just want a little background on that.
Within 30 days, within 30 days of that owner, that handing over the keys, mortgage starts. Habitat provides an interest-free mortgage.
I understand, but are they, are they the title owners? Do they, do they hold the deed to the property?
Yes, we have, we have, we have a hold on the deed, we're the second title holder, but yes, they, the deed is in their name.
Okay. Okay, so are they, I mean, they're the applicants, or this variance, or you?
We are.
Okay.
They're not the homeowner, we're, we're still, we, we own the property until it's turned up, until we go, and we go to the title company and turn it over to them, it's ours. And then we start paying taxes.
Kind of a unique situation.
Very unique situation.
Yeah.
That's why we're so successful. We give them a hand up, not a handout, and they pay, they pay taxes just like everybody else.
Right.
Mr. Hoy, we haven't heard from you yet. You have any questions or, or concerns?
I'm a little stunned by all the happenings. I've been on the board for close to 10 years, never been to an emergency meeting before. And with remarks made, and Cora, I can't see your last name, so I'll just use your first name, in regards to her comment of not having an attorney present, I'm wondering, do we need to, to move it down another week? And if they feel that an attorney is appropriate, to indeed make it a fair and level playing field. I'm going to make the comment that I'm the person who wrote the DNR, in regarding the, the setback from the creek, because I wanted pretty much to just get the scoop straight from the DNR, in regards to Mr. Feller's comment of being a contractor and being aware of things like that. I just wanted to be sure we were on the straight and narrow, and not expose Paul to any second guessing. And we've got the answer from the DNR. I almost think we, we need to allow them an attorney. I really do.
The, I, I don't, I'd step in on that, Tom, in that the, the Board of Appeals does not have, let me see, you're, you're proposing that there's two parties here. What we got was the type of, of legal advice that the board is always able to get from the city attorney. That is a given. They, they are, they are in the same position with regard to us and this decision as, as Paul is. So I don't necessarily agree with the applicant that they're at a disadvantage, and that somehow the city has an attorney and they don't.
Don, can I step in?
Yes, please do, Greg.
You know, being an attorney myself, I, I, I would agree with Don, uh, Tom, sorry, that, I, I would like to see a legal argument on it, to be honest with you, and to see if there is a, an attorney that can come here and provide some legal arguments with the facts. Because I think we would be, and just to allow them to have a week, I don't think that's, you know, and given her concern, I think they, they should have that opportunity, to be honest with you. Because if I were to vote today, looking at just the factors, I would, I would say no. But, you know, if they have some legal counsel that can assist them, that provide it in a certain way, maybe I would have a different position. And so I, I, I would agree with Tom. If it was my, if it was my vote today, I would, I would side with, let's, let a little vice, and potentially have someone here to advocate their position.
I'm amenable to that.
May, may I ask a question that maybe kind of folds into this? I'm not for or against another week. I guess where I'm confused, if we give another week, is what happened in the last two weeks? This is exactly what we did prior, is we, we punted for 90 days, so that there could be, you know, legal counsel, there, there could be conversations with the city. If I'm, if I'm being honest, I haven't seen a, a, a new piece of evidence provided. I mean, we're having the same conversation we had prior. I was ready to vote then, I'm ready to vote now, but I, I just wonder, if we give another week, you know, what happened in the last two weeks? I, I guess that hasn't been clarified to me at all, in terms of who is discussing what. Did it go to council? I haven't heard that yet. So I'm super confused as to why we're back here two weeks from now, except for, should we get it, we get it going?
I guess my, Tommy, my, my, my thought is, maybe there's something that hasn't been explored yet, that would fit into the factors that, maybe that they would present to us that would change the outcome. I don't know, maybe not, but I think at least that affords them the opportunity, from my perspective.
Jim, Tom, we know what Tom thinks, we know, but Tommy's kind of in there somewhere. What do you think, Jim?
Well, I respect Greg's counsel on this. I think I as well respect Tom and Tommy's. I guess it's a tough nut. And if, if the vote is no, I almost feel obligated as a board to have a side note where it's, we're putting the onus now on the applicant to go forward and somehow make this work money-wise. They, I don't know what that is. I'm talking out loud. If we vote yes, then they're fine, they can go, gangbusters, but the whole neighborhood's going to be kind of upset. And both things, both things are kind of upsetting. So we're going to have to make a tough call on this one, that's just what we do. But I don't know, is there a structure, if there's a no vote, can we make a recommendation, or can that be made during the vote, with regard to monetary, something to help the applicant, if it's a no vote?
Mr. Chair?
Before we answer your question, Jim, I think we'll hear from it there.
Okay.
So I wanted to address a couple issues, and I will also answer your question, Jim. First of all, just to underscore what Mr. Chairman said, my role here is an advisor to the board. I am not here to, the city, it's, there aren't, like, it's not an adversarial proceeding. So I, my role truly is, is to advise the board. If, if it would make the, obviously, it's the board's decision, but if there's any, if there's been any suggestion by any city staff that an attorney was not needed, I, we always want anyone who's coming before any board, or for any of the, any type, any proceeding like this, to know that they are always free to bring their own legal counsel, no matter what their interaction with the city is going to be. And I certainly don't want it to, don't want any kind of- And I certainly don't want it to, don't want any kind of discouragement on that account to have come from the city. And I, I don't know anything about that interaction. I wasn't in on that meeting. My other comment with Tommy's question, the city, historically, the city's policy has been not to take a position in support against a variance. That is something that is within the purview of this board. And so if city staff were to get involved in trying to mediate some sort of intermediary solution, it would essentially be the city taking sides. And that's not, that the city will do at this juncture, because it's entirely up to the board whether to grant the variance. And we can't have any suggestion that we're taking a position on this variance, but we never, we don't take any position on other variances. So we're not treating people equally or anything like that.
Can I just comment on that? Because my, my impression, and again, I just want clarification. This is a tough decision for everybody. I just want to make sure I'm clear eyes, full heart, right? Like, I felt like we, we left it because there needed to be some alternatives discussed between resolution. And our hope was, within ninety days, the parties that are involved could have a conversation, and it would get resolved in a way that, that, that we didn't have to be in, you know, in this position. I think is what we were doing. To clarify, if you were saying, look, the city's position is, we're not there yet. Let's deal with the variance first, then, then I'm clear. And that's, I understand why we're back here.
So ultimately, what it comes down to is that the variance is necessary, regardless of any other attempted solution. The, the variance would still be necessary. Otherwise, the property wouldn't, would not be compliant with the zoning code. So while it was the intention to look for additional alternatives, when we met as a staff and we really dug into this, the only options really are for them to either get the variance or not get the variance and go from there. And with respect to, the suggestion has been made, I believe at the last meeting, I think somebody might have mentioned it, about this potentially going to council. This is not something that's within council's jurisdiction. That we, under the board's jurisdiction, is whether or not the property is compliant with the, is going to be permitted to have a variance from the zoning code. Your decisions are not sent to council for appeal or any, or review or anything like that. And therefore, it is entirely in your hands to make the decision. And I do understand that's not a place that you may want to be. Also, along those same lines, it would not be, if you do hold the item, it would not be appropriate to make any suggestions as to potential actions that the city should take. The board's jurisdiction extends only to, in this particular situation, extends only to whether or not to grant the variance. Any other action taken by the city is not something, or suggested to be taken by the city is not something that falls within this, this board's jurisdiction.
Get that answered.
Yeah, just to, just to weigh in here. We, we are allowed to make qualifications to a decision. You know, I sure would, I sure wouldn't want us to audience of who is at fault and who isn't, and who all this should be dealt with in any way. I would like to restrict our decision to the variance request that we have before us. I think Greg has brought up an interesting thought. And before we go too much further, we should hear from the applicant. Do they wish to have us delay to some extent and allow you time to prepare, to get an attorney to present an opinion or an argument to them?
I can, I can just speak. First of all, Lindsay, I don't, I don't, I just, please don't, I don't, and to all of the people that attending here. We, I take this personally at times, and I need to step back from it because I'm fighting for my family. So I respect the fact that you're here, being here, because you're supposed to be representing them as legal counsel, and that's understandable. And I'm not, like, we didn't get to bring that herself. If I came off like that, I apologize. But at this point, I'm going to need to just take a step back. And I'm really, I'm really feeling that we do need to get legal counsel, because right now I don't feel our organization did anything wrong. And I, I, I cannot afford to absorb this hundred and fifty-plus loss that I'm going to take on this. So I'm going to ask that we do, and I respect Mr. Babcock's suggestion that we do, because I'm going to go have to find, I'm going to go need, I'm going to need a lawyer. We're going to need a lawyer, and we're not going to find it in a week.
Yes, Alder Dorf.
Cora, let me just say something. At some point, you might need a lawyer. You might. I'm not sure this is the point where you need a lawyer. That what happens here is not necessarily the end. I hope they're going to say yes, but that's just me, you know? And then everything is great. But if they say no, it's not the end. There is a step. Perhaps Attorney Mather could explain what, what other steps there might be.
That would be appreciated.
Absolutely. So if the allegation is that the city is at fault, then the Habitat can file a claim against the city, and that would go through our claims committee. And that step has to be taken before any legal action can be started. But I believe that there is a dollar amount limit as to what our claims committee has the authority to decide. If the damages exceed that amount, it may go to Barb, does it, do you ever get these in finance? Do you ever get these in finance?
Get the claims. We get claims. And at that level, it would, that would go to finance. And fifty thousand is my understanding. It does not, that means that the city can do at that level. It does not mean then that that's the end. Then, my understanding is circuit court.
Could take it to circuit court.
Is next. So it, this, this is just, I, I really feel that a decision should be made so that, because this is going to be horrible for, to wait two weeks and then come back here. We will be no further than we were. I too, Tommy, understood that the staff was going to go out, and they were going to find, and there was going to be ideas and shrub rings like that. No, then found out they, they couldn't do that. Nobody did that. There, there wasn't that. Alders tried to talk to people, a pastor I know tried to talk to people. But what you expected, what I expected to happen too at this meeting, that didn't happen. And in addition, this doesn't ever go to council. It doesn't. It's just on you guys. So I'm going to just pray for a good outcome here. And then if there's not, hopefully move to the next level. That's my opinion. Thank you.
I was just suggesting the attorney to allow them, I mean, my suggestion, Tony, is it would put me in a better position to make a, I guess, the best decision as a board. And just because this is not the final stop, I take the job, you know? I want to do the right thing. So, and make sure I have everything in front of me to make an informed decision. And I, if I, if I were voting today, I feel like maybe I wasn't going to vote based on all the facts. Maybe this is all the facts. I don't know. I mean, maybe there's more to it that hasn't been explored. And I don't want to cut it short, because I feel it's like it's too important of a decision. So that's where I'm at.
At this point, to move us forward, Greg and somebody, why don't we vote on whether or not we're going to step back and allow the applicant to get an attorney to make a case to us?
I think, can I ask? Because I think there was some clarification questions. I think we did a good job of asking like those steps and Alderman Dorf like walked through. But is that, did any of those questions change your mind in terms of asking for that request? Because at first it was, and then there was clarification questions in terms of steps. Are you still in that same position? That would be to, is it Cora? Is that something you want to delay? Another, because after those clarification questions or the advice from the aldermen, are you still in a position where you're saying, yes, that is something that you're requesting? Whether we get granted or not, is that something that you're, you're asking for still? Or no, you'd rather have a decision tonight?
You know, I, you know, last time I read your notes, you know, it's kind of like above your pay grade. I got a board to report to, and I'm wondering if this is, you know, I, I don't mean to make light of this. But I guess I, I look, I look at Barb and what she said. Either way, I'm going to, I mean, right now, I can tell you, other than the fact that I see, we're kind of looking at Mao as somebody that may have been our, you know, our hiccup, and we don't want to talk about fault in that. Every one of our home three years, I mean, we've put the hands of Mao and made those decisions for us. And the heirs, you know, wherever it was, we, we, we got our permit in November, and today is, in, in, you know, it's April. And, and we have, the house has got a foundation and a footing, and it's got a home. We came to the meeting with talking about moving a home and what it would cost. So I'm, I'm confused as to now. I think, you know, if we vote, I think, I think I'm, I'm thinking farther ahead if you vote, but I know what way I have to go. I, I'm almost thinking that. And I, I'm going to call into my, text into my board president right now, because I'm confused. I don't, I guess I don't.
I, I detect Alder Stevens would like to speak.
Chairman, please. Listening to everybody, there's one piece of this puzzle that we're missing. Mao associates. I don't think they're on this call. Wouldn't it be pervertive for us to have a conversation with them as well?
I can answer that if that's okay.
Okay.
That would be really not, would, that would go more to the question of liability and who's actually liable for whatever mistake was made, and not necessarily to the question of whether or not the variance should be granted.
And I, I think I would add is that I think the, the goal of this is that, you know, the applicant presents a case based on the facts, you know, that are about the property. And if they want to bring their facts or, you know, hey, here's this person. But if Mao's not on the call, it's not, it's not, I wouldn't move the meeting a week to then wait for Mao, because that, that's part of, you know, the fact digging and presenting a case to us, the board, so we have everything we can to, to, to listen to all parties, neighbors, community members, aldermen, people involved. And, and so this is the second time we're hearing it, you know? And there was two weeks to, to better prepare for this meeting. And, and we're in the same spot, I feel.
Yeah, let's, let me say this. We, we seem to have wandered off into this issue that we need to wait and let, let the applicant have a chance to discuss things and present a better case. I haven't had a motion or a second yet that we should do that. And if I don't get one, I'd like to move on.
Is there, can, is you, do you see any call coming in? There's a gentleman that's trying to call in. Do you see a number that ever running this?
I don't see anyone at this point. If, if they do call in, we'll admit them right away.
The, the green, the green phone was Alder Person Stevens.
Okay.
Was easily identifiable because he has feedback chirps. I don't believe there's an extra person that wants to get in on the call. Let me make sure we're clear. We've got, this is, I'm directing to the board. We have a suggestion that we should consider delaying, allowing the time to present a case. The applicant has, has argued that they're, they're not sure, and they're not convinced. And they're, and if I can put words in your mouth, Cora, I don't believe you're looking hard to get us, to make you get an attorney at this point.
Well, I, I think, I think I have to ask for one now, because I'm simply, I'm simply at the point where we just don't understand the ramifications of what it is. And I can't sit for six, eight months with those two lots and those families. So the money invested, I think I would, I would come back to you with a, a legal counsel. Present my case. If I, but now Lindsay says I can't, then.
Well, the, the whole thing, the whole discussion here is predicated on us saying you don't get the variance. If you get the variance, if we say you get the variance, the, the Fullers and some of the other people may have the same kind of concerns. But you, you would then, you wouldn't be the one defending the variance in that case. If, if we say that you get the variance, Fullers then take us to court, then the city has to get involved with defending the decision that the board made. I don't know if that's something we really want to get into, but that's kind of where this goes. But we, we do have a good issue here that I want to address. And if there's not a, a motion in a second for us to even vote on the question that has come up regarding a delay, then I think we should move along.
I'd like to withdraw the suggestion for additional counsel.
I'll make a, I want to make a motion for a delay for counsel. And the reason being is I think it will be very, very for our board to have the assistance. In, in this particular case, it's, it's a unique property. And dealing with the Habitat for Humanity property, where we have some sort of transfer ownership, which was talked about a little bit at the meeting. And so, you know, we have the owner being Habitat, but at some point it becomes these property owners who are going to be kind of left in the dust. This is not, not approved. So there's some exceptional circumstances that are one of the factors we got to consider. But also some of these other factors may be lean towards not approving. And so there's a mix. I, I don't know. You know, I don't know which way I would want to vote because, because of that. If this was a different situation and not Habitat, I think it would be a little more clear cut. But I, I, I would move that we get some assistance from legal counsel on this. From, you know, that Habitat have the opportunity to do that.
Can I offer a, a, a different point of view on that? Or we need to kind of have a second on it first? Because I, I, I don't think, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, we should be delaying so specifically for legal counsel. We can make a decision to delay a week, and they can bolster their case however they choose. You know, but for us to say, hey, we're delaying for legal counsel, I don't think is within our, our purview.
Oh, yeah, it, it would be. If we, we, this would be a decision that we could make.
Specifically for them to go get legal counsel? Or just, hey, we'll see in a week, come, come present a different case?
We'd be saying, I believe, we're going to delay consideration on this to allow you time to bolster your case if you believe it's necessary.
I just, I think that's a point of distinction in the motion, that's all.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Hearing none, I guess we'll proceed with, with the vote. I, at this point, we, we would proceed with the vote if we have a motion to approve or disapprove the variance being presented to us.
Man, I make a quick statement. We have two agenda items. I do not personally see the second's the same as the first because of the shape of the lot, because of the physicalness of that lot. So I just want to make sure in There are only one right now.
That is correct.
Okay.
But I, I will need a motion in a second for us to even vote on, um, the first one.
I make a motion to deny.
Do I have a second?
I will in a second though. Hold on, can I, I don't want to gum up the system and delay this process anymore. But I think Jim brings up an interesting point. Cause a question for you, Paul, and again, it doesn't matter in some scheme. So I just want to game theory a bit of this out real quick. I would, I would tend to lean towards what Jim's saying. And if we change the agenda items, okay? And we, let's say we did approve a variance for a setback there, would that setback immediately be calculated into the overall setback? And at that point, would that then change where if, if and where the house needs to move or change what's going on? So that's a question for Paul before anybody else jumps in. Does that, does that, if we made a variance approval for that one, does that immediately based on approval, go into the overall setback of the 45, does that impact that?
I would like an easier question. Yes, I think it would. Uh, I mean officially the variance doesn't kick in for like 30 days. Um, but yes, we would consider that in, in the calculation. Again, there, there's not a precedent either. I mean, they're both independent requests that should be treated as such. And both lots are buildable. It just comes down to design, but I would count that, yes.
And I'm asking these questions because I might make a different motion here.
If I may interject, you know, I think you've heard from multiple people, the neighborhood and the people, the, the direct neighbor right next door. I mean, it's, they're just, I just have to speak on their behalf. It's.
I think, I think we should make a, and I thank you for the comments, but I think we've heard, like, I don't know if we need to close the floor or whatever, but I, I understand the situation we're in. We're trying to get to a resolution. I understand neighbors are upset. I know and understand Habitat for Humanity is upset. There's a lot going on. To go back and rehash, I think we're trying to move forward. So I appreciate it. But for me, I'm trying to figure out step one, step two. If we go to step two, Jim brings up a great point. That property is very unique. And property fits within what I deem is hardship different. And if that one gets approved, that whatever distance, that should go into the calculation and might change future decisions. And it might even change the decision we're making right now. We might approve a 30 yard setback or a 35 yard setback because the average changes. Now, whether they want to move their building or not, you know, five feet, the economics of that isn't our, our job. We shouldn't decide based on economics.
I think, I think.
I'm wondering if we want to take option two up first, make a decision there and then come back and vote on, on this one. And I don't know where the board's at with that, but that's interesting to me.
Let's not write, I mean, the, the ordinance doesn't, doesn't refer to properties that may yet be constructed in termination of the setback that we're supposed to look at.
However, if the agenda was put together, two was first and one, we would be in a different position. And we missed the opportunity to change the agenda earlier on. So I don't want to.
1696 is the first one on the agenda, isn't it, Paul?
But if the agenda was put together with 1692 first, we'd be discussing that one. And we'd be making decisions and that decision would directly impact the next thing on the agenda.
I get, I think, I think we're getting caught up in our socks here. We.
1692 is first on my agenda here.
We know the situation and I.
Let's make sure we're voting the right property. But Tommy, doing a quick calc. If we went with 25 feet on the second one or the, we might approve, then the setback would be 40 feet. An average of the four lots then. So we would not be vastly.
Yeah.
So.
What about the church? Of the church, the church setback.
It's not a residence.
It's not a residence.
Yeah. And just a point of clarification, I checked the agenda. Item one is 1696, item two is 1692.
Yeah.
So just, so we know. I just thought I'd throw it out there. Again, it's something we can, we can talk about. I make a motion, I can make a motion. If I don't get a second, that's fine. I make a motion to change the agenda order, pause where we're at and discuss the other one and make a mode on that one and then come back to this one. That's my motion.
Well, you can't make a motion. We've still got Mr. Hoy's motion to consider. And if I don't get a second, then we'll get to yours.
Dang it.
I'm still waiting for Tom, for a motion, for a, for a second to Tom's motion. Tom made a motion to, to deny.
I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to second it. And just, uh, based on today and where we're at, and if I had to vote today, based on the factors and what's been presented and uh, lack of hardship and, um, based on mainly financial and the ability to still use that lot. This is not something I want to be in a position and I, I feel terrible. Um, but today, that's the way I'd vote. And, and I would much prefer that to give the Habitat um, an opportunity to have more time, but that's not what anyone else wants to do. So I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded to deny the variance request for the 1696 property. I would like each of us, when we give our vote, and I'm going to call, according to the counterclockwise motion on my screen, I'm going to call on each of you to give a reason why you are voting yes or no. This is important. As I've mentioned to you before, I'm not looking for unanimity. I'm just trying to make sure we don't get reversed. We have to have a good reason and we have to explain our reasons why we're voting the way we are. Uh, Greg already started a little bit. Um, but since Tom introduced the motion and we now have a motion made and seconded before us to deny, I'll let Tom explain what his vote is and why.
Tom, I think you're muted.
Your vote, you're muted.
I vote to deny the variance on two reasons. Uh, the first goes to preservation of intent. I do believe that, uh, the variance would be inconsistent with the spirit, purpose and intent of the regulations within the district. Uh, particularly with the existing, uh, setbacks of the current neighborhood. That to me is, gives me a flavor for what exactly the spirit, purpose and intent of that setback is. Uh, in addition, folks brought up, uh, the comment in regards to the Realtors. Uh, and this is probably, I guess, in attorney land hearsay that, uh, uh, it would create a detriment in regards to the property values, to the adjacent property. And that would be, uh, I think pretty clear in regards to having the house situated where it is. Uh, I also do see the denial as a pathway for the, uh, the folks at Habitat to find some sort of path to move it back. So those are my two reasons.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Tommy, you're next.
Um, I'm going to vote to deny as much as that is a difficult, um, decision. And I know that impacts, um, not just the neighbors in this area, but Habitat for Humanity and the spirit of what they want to do. Um, it's a, it's a horrible situation. Uh, my reasoning, um, I agree with some of my colleagues and what they've said, but I also want to go back to the application. We, we spent a lot of time working on this application based on a training we went through. And in order to, uh, uh, approve a variance, the applicant must demonstrate a three-step test. And the three-step test is, um, does the unique physical characteristic, because you prevent the compliance of the ordinance? And when I asked that question, um, it sounded like there is, there's alternative solutions regardless of how it happened or whatever. That property can be built correctly and fit within the current zoning. Um, would granting a variance be contrary to public interest? Uh, I, I think it's been demonstrated, you know, the public interest is expressed itself. It's not a great situation. The public interest is not in favor of, of what's happening right now. So that doesn't pass that one. And in order for it to pass, it needs to pass all three. Um, I don't feel that a case has been presented to, for those two, again, recognizing how difficult the situation is. Um, and then step three is would not getting, why would not getting a variance, uh, unreasonably prevent you from using the property for a permitted purpose? And I don't think that's been demonstrated. Again, the reasons why on the application are financial hardship and where we're at within the process. And again, whether I agree with that or not, it's not within my purview to vote on that. The, the three-step process has to be all three. And I don't think either, any of the three at this point has been presented to me in a way that I understand. Again, not commenting, those comments are not reflective of how horrible this situation is. It's more of the property. And there's a solve.
Thank you, Tommy. Greg?
Yes, I've stated some of the reasons, um, before, but I mean, clearly the, um, clearly the, the public interest is affected with the neighboring properties or, uh, the neighborhood is, is not in support of. But, um, and that's, that's a, that's a huge factor in the way that the property is going to look and so forth. And how the neighbors are going to feel about it. This is a very tough decision. The, the thing that just, you know, makes me hesitant is, is Habitat for Humanity family. And so, um, you know, that is an exceptional circumstance in my mind, but doesn't override the, the other factors that, that say to me that this should be no. You know, the, 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 the public interest, the mostly financial concerns. It, I, I get where, um, the habitats coming from on, you know, this is, you know, we rely on these people and they're supposed to do this and, and we're just following this and all of a sudden this happens and we're not at fault, you know? The swallow. And, and maybe there's some, you know, something outside of this from them, but, but we look at it just from a variance standpoint, when we, what we got to follow. It's an unfortunate way to come down, but I think that's the way it has to come down. Uh, just based on what we need to follow. It's just a, it's a terrible situation. Which sure could be a different alternative, but I, I, I just don't see, I just don't see how, how there is based on what standards we need to follow.
Thank you, Greg. Jim?
Um, I'm going to vote I or no to the application to that proposal, right? And I vote as a no. Is that correct?
That's a great point because the application is denied. So I want to be clear, my vote is yes to deny.
Very good.
Um, yeah, that was a great, good call out, Jim. So to clarify, without rehashing my comments, it's a yes to deny.
Um, I, I'm, it makes me sick to my stomach. I'm going to vote yes to deny because they did nothing wrong. And, um, I would vote no to this if the overwhelming neighborhood presence wasn't such as, as it is. But I don't, I'm going to vote I or no to the application.
Thank you, Jim. My consideration on this is what would be my decision if I were presented with this variance request without there being a house built already? If this were just a vacant, two vacant lots and the first one was coming before us with the variance request that the house be at 25 feet instead of 40. I think that, that we would say that I would have no problem saying no to that request on the basis that we would have, we, knowing what we know from the applicant at this point and knowing what the ordinance says and knowing what the burden is on us to, to defend our decision. There would be no way if this were not the Fed accomplished that it already is to, to say yes to a variance request on two bare lots, in my opinion. Um, secondly, it seems to me that this is so obvious and so obvious and just by driving by that something isn't right here that I think there was a slight burden on the applicant to somehow double check. And I just don't see the reasons that have been presented to us tonight to be sufficient to overcome the requirement of the ordinance that we obey the setback rule in this case. So I hear, and if, if, um, if I'm not right here, correct me guys, but I hear a five zero that we are unanimous in our decision to deny the variance request for 1696. And now we move forward to 1692. I would be interested to hear from my own board members if in light of what you, we have just decided with a unanimous vote to deny the variance on 1696. If we can do anything else but deny it on 1692. I'm raising it this way because I don't want us to get bogged down in a bunch of discussion that ends up being unnecessary.
Right. My viewpoint is done, uh, that it's a separate issue. It's, um, the shape is different, the physicality is different. And, um, my view on that property is different than my vote that I just took.
Very good. I appreciate your comment.
I, I would concur with that while I do have some questions about this application.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, let's let Paul remind us exactly what our decision on 1692 is and what the issue is regarding the variance.
Sure.
I mean, I don't, we haven't presented this one though before, correct? This is brand new. This is new business. This is not an appeal.
This is new.
This is new, yes. Right. So, you know, after our discussions with Habitat last week and the time sensitivity to the second lot, we encouraged them to apply and, and take this again as kind of a sister request. So this is the property that's to the west. It's the triangular piece, uh, at 1692. And which did at one point have a former single family home up in this corner here. As I mentioned before, that was set back, um, approximately 15 feet. Uh, this is the site plan that was provided as part of the application. Uh, much like the other adjoining lots, the setback is set at 25 feet here. Um, because of the triangular nature of the lot, obviously your setbacks become mirror that. And when we look at the rear yard setback, we have an issue there as well, where we have now a 21 foot setback from that rear property line. So the, the variance request is twofold, uh, same section of the code, but twofold with the front yard setback. Again, with the averaging of the homes in that block and applying that to this lot. But due to the placement of the home here again, and it's, and it's footprint, um, that there is also a need for a setback on the rear yard of four feet from the required, um, 25 foot rear yard setback. And again, I have examples of the, uh, the adjacent lots, uh, but that is, uh, that is a request before you again.
Paul, I've asked this before, but maybe you can help me clarify is, were these, uh, one lot originally? Or were there always two lots here?
Um, I suspect they were two individual lots. I, I don't, I mean, we didn't do research on that from a staff perspective, but I think they've been two lots for, for some time. Maybe the applicant can speak to when they acquired them, that I think they were most likely two lots, but, um, I think that's the case.
Okay. So they've always been independent. Um, they weren't, they weren't, uh, they weren't a large lot split in two to provide extra. They weren't, they weren't, they weren't a large lot split in two to provide extra development?
At least not recently, no. Again, we'd have to go back and research that, but based on the size of the lots, I think those might be original lot sizes.
So Paul, if, if we had been presented with this without a house built on 1696, if 1696 was vacant, how would that or would that affect the way that the calculation is made for 1692?
I don't think it would have affected the calculation. I think it would have been identical. So we would apply that same 45-foot front yard setback.
Okay. So the fact that, that you're not taking a spatial consideration into effect. If I'm, if I'm far enough away, I can get away with 25 feet. That, that isn't what comes in here.
Not necessarily. I mean, each case is unique when we see these infill lots come forward at a staff level. Sometimes we find blocks that are 900 or 1200 feet long. It's maybe not relevant to go all the way down the block. But in this case, there's a good sampling of homes that we have. So those are our reference points, those three existing homes.
Now I'll ask the applicant a question. Without the, without these, you need both of these variances. Is that correct, a house on this lot?
Correct.
So am I, am I fair in saying that without these variances, 2 is not buildable?
Correct.
Paul, there, there was a house on 1692, correct? And you've already explained that it was 15 feet away?
Correct, yes.
If, let's, let's stipulate that it's 15 feet, well, well less than 25. If, if I were to acquire lot 1692 and base my judgment to you or my argument to you on what was there before and the fact that the city had essentially allowed this lot to exist, would I have a, any, to you, and I, I realize I'm putting you in a horrible position, but I'm trying to draw out the, the city's concern or the city's interest or the city's predetermination of the validity of a lot based on what was there before and how long it has been an independent lot? Because it gets to the point of whether or not the owner of 1692 then has a damn good reason to it that that's a buildable lot. And therefore he has some owner's rights and expectations that this board needs to consider regarding that lot.
I think I get asked that question almost monthly. You know, is a lot buildable? And my typical response is yes. You know, when I look at lots, even lots that are maybe, you know, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 square feet in size. Sometimes they might need a variance, but in many cases they are buildable in the sense that it, it comes down to the design. And there's some limiting factors on setbacks and widths of homes and so forth. But in many cases, they are buildable. I think, you know, what was there previously, I, I don't know. From a staff perspective, I don't know if it's relevant. I think the slate's been wiped clean, so to speak, that it's now an infill lot. I think the home that was there was built under some standards at that time. That could have been 70, 80, 100 years ago, which we barely had zoning requirements at that time. So I think the challenge with any, any time with the zoning code is matching up to unique situations. And obviously the board sees a lot of those, right? So again, I, I believe the lot's buildable. It comes down to design, but I, I wouldn't give consideration to what was there previously. I, I think that's a moot point, that's in the past.
Okay, I have, I have a question for, and I'm going to, I'm going to pose it to Alder Dorf since she's the only one who is still on board here, at least as far as I can tell. The city-
Alder Stevens is still there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, let me, let me, let me raise my question to the both of you. The city has, I know in the past, purchased lots at various places in the city because I assume they believe that there was no feasible development of those lots.
Many times when we purchase a lot, it's because the, the taxes haven't been paid and we get a good deal on the lot. And sometimes we sell them to places like Habitat so they can build on them. That's, that's one reason I know that we purchased lots. Paulo's not a used hat, so I got that right. All right.
Okay, Alder Stevens, would you care to comment further on that?
You muted yourself, Alder Stevens. Do you want to comment further?
There you go.
Oh, there, no. I agree with Alder Dorf.
Okay, so the, the city's not, let me, maybe it's my misinterpretation. The city's not in the business of acquiring lots to create some new green space, are they? Have they ever done?
Not for the most part, unless there was a planned development, you know, adjacent to a park or something. The city's in the business to keep taxes as low as possible. That's one of our businesses. So I don't know that we just acquire lots for green space, but Paul might have a different point of view.
Well, sure, certainly when they're related to park purposes, but this is not a park case. And I think Alder Dorf is correct. Sometimes we acquire lots, we get them on a fire sale, so to speak, or tax foreclosure because they're just remnant parcels or they go tax delinquent. I don't think that's the case here. I think these are viable lots. But we have partnered with Habitat in the past and they've been a very good partner in situations like this where they can get maybe a smaller home on a lot to, to provide housing for a family.
Now I've got a question for Cora. I apologize to refer to you so familiarly, but I, I do have a hard time saying your name without making a mistake. So if you could explain to me the interests that Habitat has in developing this lot and why you've gone to the point of trying to develop this lot?
Because I have a, a long list of homeowners that are willing to take this lot. I take lots and I average out every lot I buy, whether I get them for, these lots were $18,000 or whether I get them for $5,000. I have a waiting list of families up to 10 to 12 a year, waiting for a lot that we actually, we vet out these families quite heavily. We get 50 to 75 applicants at a time every six months. So we take lots, our lot size and Nate, I know the only thing, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I know we have to and about a 50-foot to 75-foot sidewall on the back lot, so, or the sidewall. I know I can't look at a lot if it doesn't have 50-foot of frontage because Nate would not be able to build on that lot. We build all over the city. We build in Howard. We have 132 homes to date and we put over $13 million back in the tax base. Average of $250,000 a year to taxes. So when you say people, the people I serve are low to moderate income families that can afford a house. And in our 133 years, we've had four foreclosures. I, I have, I pay the taxes, all the escrow comes here. I go to the courthouse twice a year and pay their taxes so they never miss, they're never late. It's a garbage payment if they have, if they have something wrong, the city bills us. I take care of it and it comes off their mortgage. We are the best neighbor and in every plot we go in, we improve the value. And I will stand behind that statement. If you look at the corner of Walnut and Baird, if you go down a street on Western, Western Avenue, up by Notre Dame, Notre Dame High School, put seven homes up on that street in the last two years. The value of that neighborhood and those homes have increased by five to 7% on a neighborhood that had some pretty sad apartment buildings on it. So I think, Don, I, I hope I answered your question. We will build wherever we can fit a home in and we feel comfortable putting a neighborhood. We have people that want to live exactly where that corner is.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Tom, Tommy, Greg, Jim. Further questions?
Um, I've got a question.
Point of order though, do we need to, do we hear from, because it's a separate thing, do we need to hear from all the people? Again, I don't know, I have kids and dinner, you know what I mean? But do, from a, from a meeting perspective, do we need to hear from the people on the call before we jump into our discussion?
You know what, Tommy, I'd, I'd rather not do that. And in all, in all due respect to the property owners that may be still on in the area, I don't want to put them in the, in the spot of potentially being the people or the factor that causes us to approve or disapprove. Because they have to live with, the neighbors have to deal with this in the future. And it's really not, it's really not up to us, whole of the property owners in the area to try to get an attitude on what this all means. So that's a long-winded answer. If you wish to, if there's a, a feeling of the board that's different than that, I'm certainly amenable to changing my mind, but I think we've heard enough and know enough about the interests of the neighbors for 1696 to the extent that it applies to 1692 as well.
One comment on that, I can tell you that I have diverse families going in there and that will also reflect on the notes as well because whether they're Spanish, whether Latino or whether they're American or black, we, we, we cover every spectrum. And go on record in saying that. And I mean, I know there was a point about Spanish neighbors or I just, I, I, I just want to go on record in saying we have a diverse family that's set to go in, was set to go in 1696.
All right, but we're trying to keep it to 1692. But I appreciate your comment.
So I can go first. So I'm going to ask similar questions to before. So when the design, was this design submitted at the same time to Mao as 1696? I know we're not talking about 1696, but for me, I can clarify why I want to know.
Yes, they were.
So the design was built based on an assumption that was already done incorrectly, correct?
I can't speak, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to-
Well, we, we had said earlier on the previous one that they, Mao, what was said was, well, 25 is a fairly common thing and so that's why we didn't question it or whatever. So my concern right now is that this is going to, if they were designed at the same time, one of the questions on the application is have there been any alternative designs that have been considered? And we see so many people skip over that. And for me, it helps me make a decision when I say, wow, they really have looked at, here's a design that they came up with that doesn't work, or here's a design that does work, but there's a different, and here is why we landed on this design right now in the, in the application. I don't see that at all. I, I look at the, the, the design of a house, I'm not a home builder, but I look at it and go, oh, I could, I could make a case to move that house back 40 feet. And 40 feet is easier for me to approve than, you know, 25. But I'm not a home builder, so that's where I would say, you know, has Mao put together alternative layouts or plans to make this less dramatic? And, and, and my guess is, of 25 feet, I wonder if you went back to them and said, hey, we have to get as close to 45 feet as possible. What can we do in here? And I would be more apt to then listen to a case. Because I don't see an alternative plan.
So as it sits right now, we, we would need a variance for the, the rear yard setback as the house is. So we're at 21 feet, I believe, to the back of the hypotenuse of the triangle. So we're centered basically where the house would need to be. If I made it, if I had a different design, all of our footprints for our houses on the, basically the footprint is 1,100 square feet. That's not going to change whether you turn it left, right, front or back. You're still going to need a driveway to pull around to the back of the garage on this design. So whether or not the garage is attached or if it's on the side of the house, there's still going to be a need for a driveway going behind the house and a garage setback.
I'm looking, I'm looking at a design, maybe it's the wrong one, but it goes directly from the street into a garage, not going behind. So do I have the right?
Correct. Uh, what we have, how we operate, we have a family that has, is selected for this home. They have needs where this house meets their needs. That's why this house was chosen for this lot. It meets the family's needs. What, how we operate is our families select the lots, we tailor the house to their needs, and then we move forward from there.
So you've got, you've got people lined up for 1692?
Yes.
In no way is that a spec?
Nope.
Got it, okay.
And I just wanted to make a point Mr., Mr. Everman's talking about. You know, Mao does our work, but for the, I think Nate has built probably 30 to 40, maybe 50 homes with us at Habitat already. We work very closely with the city on a regular basis, very closely. And they look over every one of our site plans. And if we ever have a problem, they give it back to us. So I want to say while we do, we do pay Mao to do that, we also work closely with the city. So for us to sit down the line and be surprised of this variance needed. Again, at the previous one we were talking about, it was a surprise to us. So I know we want to keep saying that there was fault and we don't, we, we do put a little, a lot in our partnership with the city. So I just want to say that we're not even, yeah.
I, I just want to-
Thank you.
I, I'm asking very specific questions and I'm not, and I understand all of that stuff. We've already gone over all of that stuff. I, I get it. But what I'm hearing is a design was made based on assumption of 25 feet being okay. We've already agreed that it wasn't and we're about to make another call on another property when there's potentially a different solve if Mao goes back and says, hey, how close can, during the family, considering everything, that, that step hasn't been taken? And there might be a different alternative solution where now the neighbors might be more amicable. Everything might be good because we're only approving a five-foot front yard setback. It doesn't stick out 20 feet. And yeah, maybe the back is a little bit closer, but that's because the, the lot's cut in half. So again, on the application, it says alternative proposals looked at, and I'm not hearing that there has been. Is that correct?
Alternative proposals for what?
To make the property fit within the code. So right now, it's, it's set at 25 feet. Has there been a conversation to say, hey, we realized that you can't be 25 feet? Can we design the same home? And maybe we're only at a five-foot setback in the back and that back left corner, but we're at 40 feet at the front. And now-
The farther, the farther you go back on the property, the skinnier it gets. So that's essentially as far back as we can place this house or any of the other three house designs that we have. This one fits best.
Maybe I'm missing something, but, and maybe Paul or someone else-
Can you pull up, pull up the site map?
But there's 21 feet on the back end and 22 feet on the left in the smallest point, correct?
To the corner, but it gets shorter as you go back.
Yeah. So we're still approving a variance for the back of the building against the back sidewalk, the back setback, correct, Don? That's correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so instead of approving a 20-foot, what if we approved a 10-foot? Then we got 11 feet back on the front. Can that work?
I'm 100% on board with that. When I, when I submitted the building application on March 3rd, I said to Paul Martel, please let me know how far back you'd like us to put this house. And he said he's just going to table it until it goes to the board for a variance.
I don't know who Paul, Paul, I don't know who that is.
Paul Martel is a building inspector that approves these plans.
I agree, but hold on, I just want to slow this down. We're about to approve something or have a debate about something that, nothing's been built on this, correct? Am I, I'm in a-
Correct, it's a vacant lot.
So if we already know that we created a quagmire over here, wouldn't it be best to slow down, regardless of the building inspector who is okay with what we did in the previous one that's created this bad situation, to stop and say, hey, we need to get as close to 45 on this because now we know, because before we didn't know. Now we know, here's an alternative proposal and what we'll need then for a- Now we know, here's an alternative proposal. And what we'll need then for a variance is, we'll need a five-yard back setback and a seven-foot side setback on this one corner. But from a street perspective, which seems to be the issue with a lot of the building owners that are vocalizing their concerns of this previous one being so far out, now we're in a situation where everything's getting resolved, regardless of the other property. We're in a spot where we're getting this. And, and, and that's a, that's a, that's an alternative solution that is being proposed based on new facts. And I don't see that happening right now.
That's correct, Tommy. I'm 100% on board with setting that back to whatever requirements they ask of us and then getting a variance for that rear yard setback. My issue is if he would have told me, put it at 30 and then go to the, then go for a variance, I would have done that. What he said was, I'm tabling it, take it to variance without any solution. That, what you said was a great solution. I'm, I'm on board with that 100%.
Okay. Paul, before I move forward and I'm done, thank you, everybody for the time. I apologize. I know it's late. Paul, is there anything that I am saying that is incorrect, considering the river and the back or side setbacks? If there was, if we wanted to make a decision tonight on this, where we proposed, hey, we'll approve, we'll, we'll adjust the application to say, we will approve this, we've done this before, where we approved this distance from the front and this distance from the side, which might be slightly different than the application. Is, is there anything that will, from a design perspective, from the river or the, that I'm not understanding?
I, I don't think, again, the creek is not in play here, so I don't think that's a concern. Um, I, I don't know if you want to do that on the fly or not. You might want to consider more of a concrete design. But, uh, yeah, that's all I can really contribute, I guess.
Those are my thoughts, guys. I'll, I'll punt it out to everybody else, but I, I'm trying to make a, a highlight of, I think there's some alternative solutions that, that gets me to a more significant yes, rather than the current proposed design. I think there's some solutions out there. And whether we decide, I motion, you know, to, to table, or we do it tonight. I, I'll leave that up to discussion of the parties involved. And we tend, we tend to not try and get into the design elements, but I do know time is of the essence. And we've done this in the past, so uh, I'm open to hearing your guys' thoughts and, and that's kind of where I'm at with this one.
I just wanted to
Go ahead, Paul.
No, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we don't dictate where structures are placed. You know, we, we provide guidance, uh, from a zoning code perspective generally. Um, you know, we react to proposals. So, and then beyond that, we work in a collaborative fashion with, with the applicant. So I don't want the board to have an idea that we tell people where to put their structure. It's, it's really what the zoning code says and what we enforce.
I'd, I'd like to, in light of what you said, Mr. Zepnick, I'm a little puzzled now. You've got three house designs that you would even consider putting on here, correct? Is that what you said?
No, not for this family. This, this design is what we had come up with, with the family for their needs.
Okay, okay. I, I misunderstood that there were, there were only so many templates that you had to apply to a, to a property.
No, we based it on the number of, of children, how old the children are. If they have two children and their ages are less than three years apart, they share a room. If they're farther than four years apart, they have to, they can have their separate room. Everything is based on the size of the family and the income.
Okay.
They don't get air conditioning unless they have a doctor's permission. I mean, it's a simple, decent and affordable home.
Okay, before we get to my thoughts, I want to hear from Jim and Tom and Greg.
Yeah, I want to follow up on what Tommy said. Um, I'm totally behind what he said with regard to shifting the building south um, as far as we're comfortable. And I think um, if, if it's, if this footprint is kind of set for that family, then we merely have to just move it back since the closer it is to the street, I think there's more angst from the neighbors. And the further we get away from the street, the better. And so I would throw out, we, if, if the applicant is okay with it, we give that dimension in the back that we will, we will permit. And then we would permit that remaining on the street side. Um, so if it's 30 feet or 35 feet offset with the reduced back offset, I'm willing to go with that based on the fact that this is a weird property. It, it, it's going to be difficult. Anyone who builds there is going to need uh, a variance, just about. So I'm all open to that.
Tom.
Well, I, I think it's unfortunate that we have a property that is basically unbuildable without a variance. I almost feel like Habitat was taken advantage of when, uh, when they were presented the opportunity to buy a lot. And, uh, that doesn't sit well with me uh, as, as far as that perspective goes. Uh, if, if Paul, if you could pull up the, the slide with the star on it. Um, actually, the, no, the other one. They actually had a yellow star. Yeah, okay. So if you look to the, to the far left, that's the, uh, I think it used to be the old ground round right. And, uh, at the very top there, at the top of that building, and you kind of draw a line from there to, uh, to the residences, that, that's kind of like where the setback was. Are, are you going to, would you be able to do, you know, put your build in there, Nate? If, if we're looking like at a, you know, basically a 35 or 40-foot setback? You're, you're on mute, Nate.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, you're essentially looking at the bottom left corner of that star is where our building would approximately sit.
Yeah, where the, where the star is going horizontally like to the street.
Yeah.
That line in the star.
Yep.
Can, can you put your house there?
Yes, we can. And that's, that's what I was hoping to get resolved from, you know, inspections when I submitted. I just said, let me know how far back you want me to put it and we'll do it. So if you propose that we just move it back to 30 feet, we are totally on board. Whatever that dimension might be.
Well, those are my, uh, that's my question.
Can I just clarify on that, since we're talking about that? And again, it sounds like we're going down that path tonight a bit. Nate, how, how far, and Paul, how far can back, can that structure go without, again, right now, if you took all 20 feet on the back, it would leave you with one foot on that little back angle there. And I'm assuming it would probably be a foot and a half or two feet, depending on how that triangle squares itself, or, you know, skews itself down. Is that a, is, I just want to get to, is that a concern? Because right now, you move the whole structure back and approve it back in the side yard setback and not even have to deal with the front setback and get it at 45 because there's 21 feet there. And there would be a one-foot gap there on the property line. But if you look at the actual physical map, there is some green space there that, that doesn't sit on the property line. It keeps it open. You know, obviously it impacts fencing decisions, things like that, property use, but uh, how far back is everybody comfortable? You know, as a, as a property owner?
50 feet from the high watermark of that river is where it needs to be a, a minimum.
Do we know where that is?
Not offhand, no.
It doesn't, it doesn't impact the lot, but the creek is maybe 80 some feet away from the, the property line.
I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, so in, in theory, Paul, if the applicant was okay with it, that whole structure exactly as designed could go back 20 feet. And then we'd be, all we'd be looking at was a variance around side yard and back setback in that one corner, correct? Is that right, Paul?
I, I think, I think so, yeah. I'm trying to exactly understand the situation. Again, we're kind of designing on the fly and I don't
I get it.
I don't know if we have a comfort level with that.
Well, does anybody, anybody on the board, are we in a spot where we want to either continue to, I mean, Noel's really good at this stuff, and it's a shame he's not here because he can speak to it really quickly. But I'm trying to pull a Noel out of the hat here. Are we in a position where we want to, to get this done tonight if the applicant is willing? Or we want to do another thing where we say, hey, come back in a week if the applicant's willing, but come up with an alternative design and push that as far back as you feel comfortable? And then let us make a decision on front, side, or rear setbacks based on trying to get as close as possible, hearing all the neighbors' concerns, all of that. So I think that's a question we need to answer so we can move forward.
Yeah, no, I think you, I think, uh, I think Noel would appreciate that you're trying to pull him out of a hat. I think that would be admirable. But let me ask the, the applicant, how critical is a decision tonight on 1692? Given what we've just done on 1696?
We have no more work for our staff or our volunteers. I don't feel like we can delay this project any longer.
So you would, I'm putting words in your mouth, time may be well of the essence on 1692.
It certainly is.
If we said yes tonight, you're ready to go. You're, this isn't, okay. So if, if we, if we threw a wrench, if we have thrown a wrench in your plans at 1696, that doesn't affect the way you would proceed forward on 1692?
It has already delayed us a month on the start of this build. But moving forward, it would not, no.
I'm, I'm in, I'm all for the kind of solution Tommy's proposing. It's not something we ordinarily like to do, but there's a, there's an interest here on the part of the applicant who is, who has acted in good faith throughout the process. And I think, I think it behooves us as a, as a group to come to a conclusion on what we think the back, the back setback variance that we'll accept is. Um, and then let them work from there. Here's what I'm, here's what, here's why I'm proposing it. I know it's late. Right now, we've got a, a, um, a variance request on the front. And we've got a variance request in the back. We can deny the variance request on the front. And we can say that we will accept something or other in the back.
Does that need to be any specific or it doesn't matter? If we, they go one, we can say, we, we approve a variance on the back and the side, have at it, or does it need to be specific?
Well, or we could say, we'll, we'll accept, we'll, we'll grant the front yard variance um, with the qualification that it not be 25 feet, but it would be 35 feet. We, we can specify one of those two variances and let them proceed from there. Instead of us trying to design their house. I think in light of the discussions that we've had so far, we should try to make some conclusion on the front yard setback and let them work from there. I, I don't think we need to go all the way back as far as 1696. I don't think we can go as close as 15 feet. I don't think we can go as close as 25, but we can do something like 30 or 35. And let them go from there.
I, I think we can go, I think we can go up to 40. That's, that would be my motion is approve motion. I don't know if it's time for that or whatever, but give them five yards or five, uh, is it feet? I don't know. Um, it's late. Five feet, so up to 40, 40 feet. If they want to go further back, great, but up to 40 feet as far as the setback. And then approve, you know, the side and rear setback. But 40 feet, five feet with this lot, to me, I think it's all doable. I think they can go 45, but 40, I think is a good compromise.
Let's, let's make sure we know what these numbers are. Could you put the site plan up again, Paul?
Chairman, I have a comment.
Uh, yes, Oliver Stevens would like to speak. I'll go ahead and speak.
Okay, so I've been listening to you and, you know, you guys are throwing numbers out regarding this lot that we're being discussed now. If you were to give a variance, I think a number needs to be in play, you know, 30 feet, 35 feet back, because that will affect the, um, setback on the lot that we just denied. And then where time is the essence, they would need to know that setback either tonight or fairly soon, so they can redraft the layout of the other property.
Fair enough. Paul, what was the decision you made regarding the three existing properties and their implied setback for 1692 and 1696? What, what was that number?
Yeah, 45 feet.
45 feet. Okay. Absent another number, I think that's what we say the setbacks have to be on 1692 and 1696. Can you go back, can you go back 20 feet, Mr. Zepnick, on 1692?
Um, I would suggest, it, it, I think 20 is pushing it. I think if we're at, I think if we're at 40 feet, I feel comfortable. I'm a little concerned that we're running out of room in relation to the 50-foot, um, DNR regulations to the river there.
Let me see that, that site plan again, Paul. Another one that has the, there we go. So if you went back 20 feet, you'd be right on the lot line.
Correct. And I have no problem with that as long as we are 50 feet. I don't want to get into any issues with the DNR later because we're too close. That's my only concern. The setback does not matter to me from the road as long as we're good distance from the river, the minimum requirement of 50 feet.
Okay, Paul, Paul, you're suggesting that the 50 feet from the river is not an issue here regardless.
Correct.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, how, how much of a backyard variance do you want to, want to have there? I'm a little unsure that one foot makes any sense, but I can see six feet.
I, I think the, the six feet and the, the five, you know, the five-foot variance on the front and the six feet on the back and the side, that variance applies with hardship, the, designing the property.
Yes.
Using the property as whatever, not the economics that we were talking about before. This is exactly, it's a unique lot. This is exactly why the board's here. To me, I am, I'll make a motion to approve a front yard setback to, to 40 feet, so a five-yard variance there. That, forgive me, my trigonometry brain is not working right now, so I have no clue how that's going to end up for approving the side in the back in terms of how that ends up, but however we need to structure them. I wish I had Noel right now, but however we need the side in the back variance, I'm motioning to approve that based on moving everything back 15, 15 feet. And sorry, that's a really vague motion, but if anybody wants to help clear it up, thank you.
All right, guys, we're negotiating a front yard setback. Tommy's, Tommy's, uh, put his hand in. I'd like to hear what the rest of you.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion. And what we could say is whatever the offsets are determined to be based on the 40 set, 40-foot offset in the front, uh, should be used, whatever geometry says. So if it's 17 feet, uh, whatever the geometry dictates using a 40-foot offset in the front, we approve.
Let's, let's not grant carte blanche here. We're, I know it's late, but let's go back to that site plan, Paul. Right now, the setback is 25 feet on the site plan.
Oh, right, right. I was wrong on that. So it'd be six feet or seven feet, right?
I just can't in my brain right now figure out what the side setback's going to be. If you just move the whole thing back, 21 would turn into six. I just don't know what the I just don't know what the, the side would end up turning into. If anybody can do geometry math right now, it would be super helpful.
If, if you take the, the site plan we have before us and go straight south, 21 feet, use that house plan, that, that's a six foot setback and you're on the lot line in the back.
Right.
That seems a bit much, but.
Yeah, I think we're proposing just 40, leaving it at six behind and 40 in front.
He was saying 40.
Forty in front and six in the back? I'm good with that.
And then whatever the side one ends up being, we approve it without us trying to do math right now.
Right.
That, that's my motion. And Jim, you second?
That's what I seconded, yeah. 40 foot offset in the front and six foot in the back and whatever the side is.
Paul, are we good with that?
I think we need to be more precise. Let me, let me, can I rephrase it? You want to, you want to move 15 feet back?
Yes.
That's what your proposal is.
Yes.
The, the site plan we have presented to us, but the house is 15 feet south.
Correct. And that would still need a variance approval because it would still be five yards within the setback. So we still need to vote on approval for the front setback for five yards and then a side and a rear.
I mean, think it's five feet.
I mean, that's five feet. Well, because if you move it back 40, it's still supposed to be 45, so we're still approving a five foot variance in the front.
Five foot variance, yes.
Hey, do we have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. I think we've got three.
We got three seconds.
Okay.
Mr. Hutchison, you're an engineer.
Yeah?
Please state the motion as you understand it.
Okay, I think the motion is to approve a setback that is 15 feet longer than the proposed 25 feet for a total of 40 foot setback with the other dimensions falling in place with the footprint we have in front of us for the house.
Bingo. I think that's, that nails it. I think we have a motion and we have at least second or thirded it and it's been clarified to us by Mr. Hutchison. So I propose we vote. All in favor with that motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Greg, you're opposed?
I said aye.
I'm sorry. Then we have 5-0. Is that correct? We are in unanimous agreement with the proposal that on the triangular lot, we will accept 40 feet in the front and whatever the back has to be, assuming the house design that we have had presented to us in the site plan. All right. I think that's it, guys.
If I could just trouble you really quickly to just make a brief record as to why, uh, the variances are being granted, um, with specific regard to the hardship and those sorts of things.
I, I can do that.
Go ahead.
So just looking at the factors, um, for granting a variance, um, at least from my perspective, it's the shape of the lot with the triangle shaped lot is much different than the, the rectangle type shaped lot that is consistent with that neighborhood. And, uh, where you're going to put that, uh, pro, where you're going to put that house is, is very difficult given the shape of the lot. So, uh, I think that the variance is necessary for the owner to enjoy that property. Uh, otherwise it would not, the owner would not be able to enjoy it. There is some public interest in which we considered with, um, moving that, uh, from the 40, from the, I'm sorry, from the 25 to the 40 to be more consistent with the public interest in the, in the neighborhood. And certainly it's a hardship, uh, given the fact that it's a unique lot, uh, size and the triangular shape, uh, and it's certainly extraordinary circumstances exist that most of the other properties don't, in that area, don't have that type of shaped lot. So under those factors, I think, um, the variance, uh, uh, should be approved based upon those factors and the fact that we consider the public interest with, um, moving those dimensions more consistent with the neighborhood. Did I say that okay, Don?
You did. And I, and I'd add that the board recognizes that the public, the public has an interest in the successful development of these lots by Habitat for Humanity. They are providing good to society. There is one unspoken question that may come up and Alderman Stevens kind of alluded to it. Does this mean that it's 40 feet on 1696? Is that something we want to consider? We just denied 1696. We didn't provide any guidance like we're doing for 1692.
I just, I just want to make a point that I did bring that up. I'm just saying. How we would vote right now and now it's coming back around, which is a big.
Yes, yes, but some of us aren't as quick, Tommy, and I wasn't as quick at, on the nuances. So anyway.
So would it be, it would be an average, correct, Paul?
Right, so it kind of works in reverse from the point, yeah, it works in reverse from the point you made before on the previous item. We would take the, the consideration, the calculation, but I don't know that it would change the setback very much for now one at 40. I don't know what to say.
I wasn't able, Paul, sorry, I don't know if I was the only one, but I wasn't able to hear most of that. I, but.
Yeah, you're sorry. Sorry. No, I, I was just saying it works in reverse like we were discussing on the previous item, that it would be part of the calculation, but it wouldn't matter much when you run the numbers.
Okay, so, so despite my confusion, I'll claim age on all the implications that Tommy was trying to draw. What you're saying, Paul, is that, um, at present, with the houses that are there, you've got X and you're going to recalculate something Y for 1696 based on our 40 feet for 1692? Good, okay.
Right. And we will apply that new setback to 1696, but we're talking a matter of feet or inches.
If, if everything's at 45 feet, it'd be 4375 based on a four property average. So it's a foot.
Right.
So if they were to move the house, it could go 4375.
Correct. Based on whatever that new calculation is, yep.
All right. Does everybody think they know what we've decided tonight?
Yes. Does the applicant feel comfortable moving forward with their next steps on these two different properties?
I mean, I feel comfortable with 1692. Um, I understand what's going on with 1696. I just don't know where we as an organization go from here, knowing that we've now got 85 grand into this house and it's going to have to be moved.
I think Alderman Dorf was articulating earlier some good next steps, so I, I'm not sure if she's willing, but I think there was, was some, some next steps that I think would help.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Is that fair to volunteer you, Alderman Dorf?
I don't want, I don't, I don't want, I don't want the city to weigh in on any issues regarding the variance requests here. Those arguments and suggestions will have to be made separate from this because I want us to be completely separate and I don't want the city to feel that they're obliged to weigh in on any issue here. So if I can.
I just, could I just, could I just say call, he should call Attorney Mather. Nate should call Attorney Mather tomorrow. Okay?
Yeah, it's Lindsey's problem.
Okay. I'm making a motion to close the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0, we've closed the floor.
Is there any housekeeping things that we need to go over or can be adjourned? Okay, I'm making a motion to adjourn.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done. Thanks, guys. Good job.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Good night.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.[1466.15]